February 20. Good evening. It is Monday, February 28th. It is 7:00 PM and I'm calling the Maple Plains City Council Meeting to Order. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. I will be pulling with pulling 5A. Commissioner Anderson is not able to be with us. He will be with us later this in April and pulling letter J COVID follow-up.
I will move to approve of those amendments.
I'll second that.
Cahill and DeLuca, any further discussion? All in favor of approving as is. Signified by saying aye or quizzing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs. Motion carries five to zero. Do we have any visitors to be here this evening? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Whatever you are comfortable with there.
My name is Barb Rose and I'm coming here because I'm on the planning commission and I like to see a regular meeting for the planning commission. We're supposed to meet 12 times a year. Sometimes we don't have to meet and John is a former planning commission. Mike keep around there too. So sometimes we don't need each month, but I'd like to see more ability to have more than a week before saying, oh, we don't have anything. And this is not a slight on Chris, but I want to be have regular meetings because there are things that we can still discuss, you know, and bring forward to you guys. I just want to throw that out to you.
Thank you for that feedback, Commissioner Rose, and let staff relay back to the planning commission. Next item of business this evening is consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes the January 10th, 2022 City Council Workshop, January 24th, 2022 City Council Workshop, January 24th, City Council Business Meeting, January 31st, 2022 City Council Special Meeting, Engineer Pay Estimate 2022, the Mill and Overlay Project, Downtown Development Phase One Environmental Assessment and Revised City Council Appointments. I would like to pull the January 31st Council meeting minutes. With that, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda without January 31st.
The vote.
Moved by DeLuca, second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda minus the January 31st Special Meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So I had pulled the January 31st City Council Special Meeting Minutes. In number three, we talked about conversation ensued and I just thought it would be important to actually just bullet point out the timeline of that, just so for history. Looking back, there's a clear explanation of the timeline and to help people understand that the city budget and timeline is much different in managing our personal budgets and timelines. It's on page, page 12. So number three, council has asked why we waited so long before addressing the funding problem? And we just broke conversation into history. I just thought if we could just have bullet points because then it makes sense and explains that we did not wait so long.
And when you refer to bullet points regarding your CBI to about the process of the
Like the timeline, when we got the report from
Study.
Yes, that's what the full meeting. Just the timing, you know, with Abdo and any other discussion about that or trying to come back to the next meeting? That would be great.
Looking for a table on that particular one until next week?
Yeah, we'll just bring it back next month for approval. So we will move on to accounts payable.
Line 23 or page 23? Biage for me? I'm not quite sure. We're $58.54.
Any other questions? Come through the council table.
Are we a constable city or a constable fire?
We'll do a city first.
I just run down some of the new sort of splits of the expenses between people service, fuel, and those are just a couple of the kind of systems that we had kind of cleaned up. Also, you know, there are spreadsheets for all the consultants and the escrows and all of that stuff. So if anybody ever has any questions on how that's done, feel free to give me a call.
Briefly, how will that align with how we set up the budget for 2022?
Where we have to turn
Well, I mean, you, you, does the, does the, does the budget use the formal area of 45 and 30 and
We've made adjustments.
You have made adjustments. Okay.
You brought up fuel. Did we determine what the city is using diesel for? If we're sharing that class with fire. I probably do this at one point.
Well, which, because I emailed you today. Now, is the water treatment plant generator okay? So that generator takes diesel. You're saying that diesel that we're seeing that is the city's responsibility is not?
So I have to start with Dylan, what equipment that we have. It would just be a good job. Like, it wouldn't hold up the approval for me, but yeah. Since we don't run the big piles or anything like that ourselves anymore.
Right.
The Kubota, but of course that hasn't been fun. Skid loader, those, that kind of equipment, but it's good order.
Dylan had done the filling in project. Dylan had done, has done a number of projects. I hope that that's the majority of it, but I'll check.
That would make sense.
I believe there's even a note in my spreadsheet, like, with
And just full transparency to the rest of the council, I acquired about the obviously, the fuel percentages has been an ongoing thing for the better part of four years. And that's finally come to fruition, but there's that third component and that is the water treatment plant, the diesel for that. And so I'm not quite sure how we can follow that because that's going to go right to the water count, whereas this 31 and 17 will go to the public work side?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions related to the city check batch?
I'll make motion to approve the city check batch.
Motion by council member Faye.
I'll second.
If I comes a member to lawn, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the city check batch. Signified by saying aye or quizzing aye.
Aye.
Opposing? Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business is the fire partnership check batch. Anything from staff?
No, other than a big yee-haw, our work comp bill came in for this year and it looks to be the same, like, getting even dropped a few cents. I'm not really sure how that happened, but they were projecting a huge increase.
And I just want to make a note on that. Can we get a note in the spreadsheet for next year because it's nearly 25% less? And you said, well, we'll hold on to it in case it decreases next year. If there's not a note, it'll just disappear out of everyone's institutional knowledge and we'll forget all about it. It'll get gobbled up somewhere else. So I want to make sure that you memorialize it in your spreadsheet that when we get to budget time this fall, that we acknowledge it.
With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the fire partnership check batch. Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
By the lawn, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the fire partnership check batch. Signified by saying aye or quizzing aye. Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business is staff reports, which were all submitted and we have had a chance to read and review staff reports from our city planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, city engineer, public works, fire department, and administration and finance. I am looking for a motion to receive the staff reports as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Faye.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any discussion or questions?
Not a question per se, but something to check into. I noticed one of the the police report calls was about the park had closed at 10, but I thought we had changed the park closing hours to 11.
I think it was in the
Oh, they have different hours. I thought that we'd made it the same. I just wanted to clarify.
I did the same thing.
Not that you were wrong, but like for my own knowledge. Thank you.
Different cities.
We like to keep everyone.
Mayor, I had one, not question, but just a comment that we really need to keep an eye on. I don't, I last year, we didn't have a true up. We actually received money back, but on the chemical budget, the maintenance budget, we're we're pretty high already for only 50% of the way. We're 103% in our chemical and I don't know if that had a lot to do with the the maintenance that we had over there and flushing and things like that. But I mean, I don't know how we went from a year of you know, getting money back to, we're already at 9,784 or we actually, we're over $10,000 already. So we're already over our budget, our chemicals.
I'm hoping he pre-purchased for the year. I'm hoping, but if not, yes, we do need to keep an eye on it.
Chemical costs increased substantially apparently this year, but I'll look into that definitely.
Okay.
Thank you for that note, council member DeLuca. Any other notes, questions, or comments for staff? With that, all in favor of receiving the staff reports as submitted?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business is new business and we will start with the liquor enforcement and I'm going to turn this over to staff.
Pass Batanta Gary in a moment just for a quick rundown, but I did want to point out, council member DeLuca caught that in a resolution, I have three days is the minimum and city code actually I have two days. City code is actually three. So I would like to revise my recommendation within that resolution to, to make it the minimum of three days. That's called that code. And so Gary, do you want to just kind of do?
Yeah, just give you a kind of a brief rundown. It's kind of the same as we did back in January, talking about this, but on December 27th, 2021, our officers performed our alcohol compliance checks that we do annually within our city. In that process, for both May Plain and Independence, there were two failures, one at Liquor Depot and one at Moni's Bar and Grill. And to note, I wanted to kind of go through the process so you and the viewing audience know kind of the the process in which it works. We try to find somebody who's younger and looks younger, not somebody that is older and looks old. This is set up for success and we're not trying to make any tricks and we, we're not trying to set up our business owners to fail. It's quite the opposite. We really want them to be engaged with the training and the process so that they become successful and don't fail. In the process of that, we had a 19-year-old female comes to our office. We take a photo of that underage decoy so we can document what that person looks like. We ask them not to wear any heavy makeup, not to wear any fancy jewelry, dressed as a college student versus an adult person. Look, don't look older, look younger. In that process, we also take their ID. So, and they are searched. So at no point at any time do they have an ID on them. So that a person says, they handed me an ID. I looked at the birthday wrong. There is no ID to hand to them and there's no ID that is presented. If they're asked their age, they will tell the truth. So if they go, hey, do you have an ID? And they say, no, I don't have my ID. How old are you? This person would have said I'm 19. They will not lie and they'll tell the truth on that. And then lastly, I just want to go through kind of the hit process that I call it, that we went to with all of our businesses in both cities. We got a little bit of slack on Facebook and I know you were talking in the workshop about it earlier, but we do struggle to find underage decoys that are willing to do this. 18, 19-year-olds, they're not really interested in going to a bar or trying to do this job, right? We used to always rely on former, or people going to school in the law enforcement. We really struggled to find an underage decoy. So one of the, the officers went to training, that training said, hey, put it on Facebook that you're looking for underage decoys for your upcoming compliance checks. They said, that's a good hint for your businesses that it's coming. So on October 25th, that's what we did. Had some negative feedback on that, that we're trying to set up the businesses and it's not fair and all those things, but then the kind of went the opposite. After a while, they're like, hey, they're just doing their job and we got to keep our liquor establishments on track with the training and the performance of checking IDs. Then after that, December, between the 25th and the 9th, we sent out letters to the businesses and made phone calls, even hand-delivered some of, to some of the businesses that, hey, we are conducting training for you on the proper way to check IDs and to go through this outcome compliance checks. That, that was another hint. That's hint number two. And then hint number three was those that showed up on the December 2021 training at West Hennepin Public Safety is in that process, that hint was, they were told it's coming soon. You know, and obviously training's on the 9th and it's the 27th, that's their third warning of like, hey, it's coming. So if any of the businesses said they didn't know or they weren't sure or it was a setup, we really tried to make it fair and understanding and help them be successful. And that's what the training is for. It's unfortunate as I go through this list and, and the mayor and I were talking, you know, in between the break and out of eight, I think I have eight establishments between most cities, two, four, six, eight, nine people show up for our training. Nine people. And you know as well as I do how many people work at every one of those establishments. Only nine people showed up. And, and I would say half of them was the last day of us going to the business and say, hey, it's tonight. Can you come? And then we probably got another four to show up. So we probably would have had four people show up for the training. So those are the kind of the attendance sheets. We did have people from Meyer Exchange, Moni's, Winsong Farm, Oxyopian, and that was it. On that train. So where are we at today? We've obviously went through your civil process. Those two people are going through the criminal process. It's been forwarded to our city attorney for charges. And they're in the process of that now on the criminal side, but on the civil side, you guys have a city ordinance that discusses the civil side of of what happens when they have a violation within a three-year period of time. Unfortunately, for both of these establishments, this is their second violation within one year and four months. So this would be their second violation. Do you happen to answer any questions in regards to that process? Clarissa, you sent letters, you and the city attorney sent letters that the both business owners had the right to be here and to discuss the case. I have not heard from Liquor Depot. I have heard twice on an email from Jason at Moni's. Timothy, it's Timothy, Jason at Moni's. So technically, I know him as Jason, but his real name's Timothy. Sending on, sending some really nice apologetic emails to us in regards to he's going to do everything possible that this never happens again. So.
And we did one email today.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So while I was thinking about this, I know our policy says a minimum of three days. I think it's important that all of our establishments are attending the training. And I think it's unfortunate that both of these, it's the second time they have failed the compliance training and I would like to propose for Liquor Depot that we increase it to four days. I don't think they've done their due diligence. I don't think they put their effort forward and coming to the training. And our staff is trying to make available and this needs to be taken seriously. And I think this would be one way to get across to our businesses that we as a council are supporting our policies and our staff and you need to make this training a priority. I open that up for feedback from others.
Was someone there from Moni's that you trained?
Yes, yeah. There was two people there.
The person that happened to violate?
They were not.
So is your proposal or your request based on the fact that that Moni's establishment made the alcohol training and members of the liquor depot did not? Or is your request based on the well-written and sincere letter that, that, that Moni's sent?
That's a good question. First and foremost, it's based on the fact that they were there. Someone from the establishment was there. And second is in the email, they also committed that they will make sure that all their staff gets training. So I feel like they're making steps. They realize this is serious and it's not to be taken lightly. Where Mr. Schumacher has not reached out to anyone, has made no effort and has not had any staff at training.
Gary, I recall from when you first brought this to us, wasn't there also a, a comment made by the gentleman who sold to the Target? Something that was like, we don't deal with trainings or, or wasn't there a comment made or, or am I remembering that wrong?
I, no, I think you're remembering it right. I, I don't want to go on the record for exactly what it says because I don't have the report in front of me. I read it before I came. He said his training was if they look 30, that he doesn't card them. And he thought this person lived 23 to 24. So he kind of violated his own thought process that he established or was trained on. And the person was 19.
Okay, thank you.
I struggle with giving them different penalties for the same violation. But I think you are on to something and I don't know if this is something we could legally do, but possibly say four days unless they complete training for all their staff by certain date and will not be done. And it may not be worth it to them, but I think it maybe shows that we're serious about, hey, if you take the training seriously, we'll take days off.
The problem with that though, then I also feel like we're penalizing our staff because it's our staff that's doing the training. And they're not making a priority, but it's made available with personal invites, even showing up at your business and inviting.
But after the fact, so that's the problem I have with it. They both violated it after, so I don't know that we can penalize them differently.
Our code says then, yeah.
The bigger question to me is, is three days enough? Since we're literally 16 months, within a 16-month period, you violated it twice. Do we need to up that a little bit to get their attention to go? Is, I'm assuming that you don't necessarily always do it in December. You have a right sometime to move that up if you've got all the due diligence and letting them know. Not so sure that I couldn't support a little bit higher penalty and or days and they have to be consecutive, as I understand.
Correct. That's what your code said.
And then how do you, Gary, determine when that's going to be?
The last time it was one day. So I reached out to both the owners and said, which day? And we worked out an agreement, which I thought was fair. It's going to be a little bit more difficult with picking three consecutive days for me. You know, because that's going to be very, very hurtful to their business. So that's going to be a little bit more of an intense conversation.
The memory serves, Gary, the day that they chose was a holiday that they normally weren't open to begin with. It was like New Year's Day or something like that. And
You're right, John.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not a fan of varying penalties. Penalty is a penalty. Do not agree with more than two, but I think the, the day, the three consecutive days, that is the penalty, but the, but it has to be days that, that maybe it's a sting in the, in the pocketbook because it can't be Thanksgiving and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, something along that line. It has to be normal business operations without any concurrent or I'm not supporting hearing two and three days.
Do we want to give the police chief the opportunity to work those three days out or do we have the right to say you'll serve, you'll serve those Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
I, you know, I, I'd prefer that, to be honest with you, when I read the resolution, I would like to link have this discussion with you because if I pick Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there may be some, some people that would say, no, we want Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You know, what, I'm looking for direction, I guess is what I'm saying. What do you want out of this as a council?
I'm an I'm, I'm not in favor of two different penalties either. I think it's three days for both groups, but you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a Thursday, Friday, Saturday to actually give it some, some extra bite rather than go on the extra day. You know, ma- make it on a, you know, in a time that's, it's going to, it's going to make them think.
I struggle with that. Just being active in the chamber and listening to our businesses and the way they've been struggling. Not only have they been hit with COVID, they were also hit with Highway 12 construction, both from the east and the west. And I think three days of people coming to your door and possibly leaving to go to a different establishment is going to hurt in the pocketbook. I would I, I think it's going to be hard enough that I would prefer to see it on like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I think they've, they've endured enough with COVID and construction.
Yeah, I think doing a Friday, Saturday would just be egregious.
Especially when you have people who are apologetic and going above and beyond with the requirements and trying to do the right thing, then we're going to
I do think we should possibly, before we do our next check, reconsider what a third strike would be though. Because I do think a third strike should be heavier than what our ordinance is. I do think we should possibly, before we do our next check, reconsider what a third strike would be, though, because I do think a third strike should be heavier than what our ordinance is. Because if you make that third strike very quickly, you're not learning, you're not putting effort into it.
Well, and the ordinance is minimal, so we have the ability to.
The, 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 the problem with a third strike is it could be catastrophic. Not, not catastrophic to the, you know, sales of business. I'm, I'm talking if they're not following through with compliance. It could be catastrophic that someone could get a hold of liquor as underage and, and you're picking them up off the highway. And that, that would be difficult. So it, it has to be noted that, that, yeah, the third strike, third strike within what? Three years?
Three years, yeah.
So they still have twenty, twenty months left or something like that. Yeah, so.
And we're not the only ones that check. The county could check, state could check. So they can't bank on just it's West Hennepin, it's gonna be the ones coming in to check. The, the state alcohol gambling can check and Hennepin County does alcohol compliance checks as well. So.
They might not be so courteous as to leave its.
Correct. But I'm saying they're, they're, they could check more than just us. We're not the only people that is out there doing. No, it's a state license.
So if the sheriff were to, for example, check, would we be notified that?
You would be.
Okay, then we would then have, it would be a third strike for us to consider.
Correct. And I think that's something that the owners need to realize that it's not just West Hennepin, your local police doing it. There's other entities out there that, now, they don't do it often, but it could happen. It could happen, yeah.
Clarissa, can you verify that our code calls for a $750 fine for the second? We're a little off on the dates. I want to make sure that we don't, before we put a resolution out.
Yeah, I looked at it before I came and I had to pull up my computer when I was gonna do it online. I thought there was a little bit of confusion in the code in the first part where it says if a felony occurs, it says seven fifty-three days. And then when you go to the next page, it's talking a, a different seven fifty-two days. So I see where the confusion is because I told you three days when we were here a month and a half ago.
Is this considered a felony?
It is not.
Okay.
It is a gross misdemeanor.
I do think we do want it to sting a little. And so perhaps the four days, but do the Monday through, I know some of our codes on Mondays, maybe it won't matter, but Monday through Thursday.
So you want to increase both to four days?
I, yes, I would. Whenever we decide, I want it to be consistent across both.
Because right now, minimum is three.
Well, we'll look through that right now.
Yeah.
I think we're starting to parse things that we're starting to say we're gonna close you on a day that you weren't open anyway. Come on.
Right.
That's not what the tender spirit of that penalty is.
Know what I'm saying, but then they could, so if you do Monday to Thursday, and they're normally closed Monday, they might decide to open up, is what I'm saying. To get that extra data. So we just say the four day week days. Then regardless of what shape they're normally open, get them. I remember this, so that's I do. If things Monday have the hour.
Yeah, but neither one of those are closed on, on Monday. They're, they're seven day.
I just have quite a few of ours. Okay, so we have two things we need to decide. The number of days. The direction we want to give chief for his staff of the days we wanted imposed. And then the financial fees. I've heard nothing about the financial fees. Everyone in agreement with the $750?
Assuming that's what the code says.
The code is seven fifty on, on both.
So what's the difference?
Gary, do you feel that would be significant enough to help change the behavior going forward?
The three days, the money in the three days?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would hope so. I think there were, I think of the first violation sixteen months ago, there was some excuses being made of the decoy wore a mask. And there were some, I think this is the big wake up call to at least one of the businesses. We, we are gonna offer, just so you guys know. We're gonna offer training twice a year. These are the dates, they're gonna be posted, they're gonna know about them. And those are the dates that we're gonna do. The problem that we run into is one business will be, oh, I couldn't make it that day. Can you do a special class just for our business? And then the other one's like, well, you did a special class for that one. Can you do one for us? And then it goes back to time resources, right? So we're gonna offer two. And the, the two days is, the two days it's gonna be, and we're just gonna be consistent with that. And then we hope that they can adjust their schedules around that people are there. One will be like a morning and the other one will be like a late afternoon. So you can get through your lunch rush for those restaurants and before the dinner rush. One will be in the summer, you know, for spring and one will be in the fall, would be my guess. So we're really trying to work with them on that, with the training. I know the code does say that they're supposed to do training. I can say that not every business does training and we don't, at least for us. The code doesn't say it has to be through us, but that's different by us. So I think we can get them all on the training.
Does this training need to be in person?
It has been, yes. It has been in person. Passer on driver license, fake driver's license, different things so they can touch it, feel it, so they get an idea of what they're looking for.
I, I, I'd prefer to keep it at three, honestly. And if you want to, I, I, I don't want to sit in bar over this, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at three instead of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which is the work week. I mean, is that, is Friday sting enough?
I'm fine if we use the three days with the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I just, because the goal for me is not to penalize, but to change the behavior.
Correct.
For them to not to want this to happen.
But they have to be open and it, it can't run against any type of holiday or situation where they would normally be not open. And then are they, Gary, do you, would you recommend that both those establishments serve this penalty out on the same day of the same week?
I mean, it'd make my job a lot easier if it's the same day of the same week, right? Because what I'm gonna do is send my officers there throughout the day to make sure they're not open.
Okay.
So yes, it'd be, it's not, doesn't have to be, but it'd make our job easier.
But if, if you're given direction on that, then you work with them.
Right.
Oh, to a step. I don't want to get into that detail.
So just, just to clarify, so Monies would have to be completely closed? They can't even serve food? Or can they just not serve alcohol?
They just can't serve.
They can't serve.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure, because you said make sure they're closed. I'm like, well, they, I mean, it's up to them, right?
Right.
If, if it's worth it financially.
I think it's risky.
I would agree with you. All right. What I'm hearing is there's agreement for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, three days. Both served at the same time. The chief will, and his staff will work that out. And the $750 fine, did we say?
So there's two different sections. And so Scott wrote the, Scott Landsman, the city attorney, wrote the resolution and references the code, the D one B. And that section has the second violation in three year period, seven fifty-five plus two day. So there is a section above, that's the three day. But, but yeah. So that seven fifty is there.
And each one of these will need a separate resolution. Is that correct, please? All right. So I am looking for a motion to approve a resolution making the findings conclusion and decision regarding liquor license suspension and imposing civil penalty on Monies Bar and Grill for three consecutive days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for the $750 fine. This is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call vote. Looking for a motion. Any further discussion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Cahill?
Aye.
Aye.
Delon?
Aye.
If the ayes have it, five to zero. Next motion, looking for a motion to approve a resolution making findings, conclusion and decision regarding liquor license suspension and imposing civil penalty on Liquor Depot. Three consecutive days, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, that will be implemented by the chief and staff with a $750 fine. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Delon, second by Fay. And it is another resolution. Delon?
Aye.
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Mas Kuski?
Aye.
Aye.
If the ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you for being here, chief, and first.
The third violation within a three year period.
You speak up.
I can't even hear you. The third violation in this section of code in any three year period is $1,000 fine plus an eighteen day suspension. So that's pretty motivating.
Yeah.
So people probably want to. Make sure they're aware of that.
Wow. That's half a month.
Okay. A lot of money.
Okay. All right. Anything else staff needs from us regarding that? All right. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is e-charging GPA and court service amendment renewal.
I think the attached letter was received from David Ross of Carson, Fenton and Schrader. And requested that we approve the GPA. I ran it through Gary just to kind of verify that this is all very standard. Do you have any educational?
Yeah, I'll just give you the quick rundown on it. So e-charging is a online portal that we use to criminally charge somebody. Some people call it a formal complaint, other calls it a long form. Prior to this. We used to have to fax the copy of the report or email it to Carson and Callan and and then we had to drive there and to physically sign it. And then we had to take it and drive it to Minneapolis downtown and bring it up to the fourteenth floor and present it in front of a judge. And I swear, the judge signs it and then had to take it through the eleventh floor and stamp it. And then they recharge. Now, this allows us to use the electronic means of with our report electronically sending it to our prosecuting attorney, our prosecuting attorney goes into e-charging, draws up a complaint. That complaint comes back to the police department, our investigator or myself, we review it, we sign it electronically. And then once we sign it, it gets automatically sent to the judge and one of the judges in Hennepin County, they sign it and get sent to the courts. It is completely revolutionized, miles and driving and efficiency all around. And this is just allowing that to happen, to use e-charging with the prosecuting attorney or police department or judges. Thank goodness it has happened.
How long have we been e-charging?
Probably eight years. This is our second or maybe ten. It, yeah, it was so inefficient.
Do you anticipate Independence will be signing this?
Yeah, they signed it, I believe, at their last council meeting.
So with that, then, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution approving the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement with the city of Maple Plain on behalf of its city attorney.
So.
Moved by DeLuca?
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion or questions regarding this? Or none? It is a resolution, so. We'll mix it up a little bit. Cahill?
Aye.
DeLuca?
Aye.
Delon?
Aye.
Those alphabetical and I missed it. Fay?
Aye to all above fifty pages.
Mas Kuski? Aye. The ayes have it, five to zero. Next item of business, we keep the chief busy tonight, is the animal impound contracts. And I will turn that over to the chief and our administrators.
I have one clarification on this. Yep, on the resolution. It should say for the Monticello annual retainer instead of monthly retainer. So the fees and Gary is going to run into detail. I'll, I'll just.
I'll try to keep it short. I don't have a better counsel. Basically, everybody's getting out of the animal impound business. We have been successfully using Crossroads Animal Shelter for many, many years at Highway fifty-five and fourteen. And both the city of Maple Plain and the city of Independence and pretty much every police department and city in this entire area has used Crossroads Animal Shelter. A, they were good, and B, they didn't charge an annual fee. So the only fees they collected were when we brought an animal there, whatever the daily fee was, and the owner showed up, they charged the owner, that was the fee. They're completely out of the business. They notify both Independence and Maple Plain and every other city around that uses them, that they're out of the animal impound business. They're still in the animal rescue and take them for private citizens, but they will not take them to the police anymore. As we began to look around, every one of the police departments around me was trying to make a move and find somebody that would do it and how much it would be. And all of a sudden, we realized we're competing against each other. I was trying to go to Bubbles and Bowes in Independence right up Highway twelve. They were in and then Orno PD called them and the Minatrista PD called them. And then now they're getting nervous. They don't want to do it because there's too many police departments. And I found that we, all of us chiefs were just together in a lakes area. And I said, why don't we just all like go talk this out? We're all fighting each other. So we got lucky in the sense of the Orno Community Service Officer, Mike Wolkin, did an amazing job on this. He went and found Oak Ridge Kennels in Minatrista. We put it together on a contract, a yearly contract for all four police departments. They want $400 a year to take the animal impounds. And then they would divide that up by the four agencies of Medina, West Hennepin, Minatrista and Orno. It's a really great service and it's cheap and close. So we were like, yeah, let's do it. Where the Monticello Animal Shelter comes in is Oak Ridge Kennels doesn't do the final adoption or euthan- euthanizing of animals. They hold them for ten days and then they're out. So they said, we gotta come back as a police department in the city and go get the dog. And then we gotta figure out what to do with it at that point. So that's where the Monticello Animal Shelter comes into the contract, where they have a $250 animal fee. They will finalize the adoption process to the end. So it's a little bit of going back and forth. I really don't anticipate any animal actually ending up at the Monticello Animal Shelter unless it's a dangerous dog that, that we can't even really handle. We would go directly there with that dog. So kind of needed two contracts. In the end, we might find that just having Monticello might be the, you know, next year after we go through this year, we might find that Monticello is our best option. But I will tell you, North Suburban Animal Shelter just shut down too. They're not taking police impound. So that's the entire northern half of Hennepin County and all of Shawnee County. And Monticello is nervous. Because I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's just the culture that they don't have staff and people or, but nobody's in that business anymore. So it's really putting you as a city, us as, all of the police departments around here and all of the cities at a disadvantage because we think it'd be easy to just pick up a dog and bring it to somewhere if they help find the owner. Not the case anymore. So this agreement, we have ten, we have, it'd be a hundred dollars a month for both cities, Maple Plain and Independence. It'd be about $600 for Maple Plain, $600 for Independence, and then $125 for Maple Plain for the half of the $250 on itself. So happy to answer any questions, I think. For now, until something else comes up or something that's better, this is a really good alternative. I will say we don't have many. So we'll take the dogs, we'll hold them in our office for a while. If they're really good dog, you let them run around in the office with our staff. Or if they're not, or if they're a little dirty, they go in the kennel in the garage, usually a Facebook post, waiting two hours, the owners. Or if they're not, or if they're a little dirty, they go in the kennel in the garage, use your Facebook post, waiting two hours, the owners are located. So I don't anticipate many going, but we, we need an option in case we don't find them.
Four cities at a hundred dollars a month?
Yep.
Yeah, so everyone's, these four police departments are looking at basically the same resolutions?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
Agreements.
Yeah.
Same agreement.
All right, with that, I am looking for a motion to approve the resolution with the animal impound contracts. Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or questions regarding this? DeLuca?
Aye.
Mas Cuskey.
Aye.
Delon?
Aye.
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 Right, the ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you for your work on that. All right, next item of business this evening is specialty events permit from the Orno Rotary. Mr. Fay.
Thanks for putting me on the spot, Ms. Atwood. Well, I, I think the narrative that, uh, we put into the package is self-explanatory. We are looking for city permission to host a third party in the park in four years, uh, one lost due to COVID. What's that? This will be the fourth and final.
Yeah.
And, uh, no. 18, 19, 21. Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, fourth. As Orno Rotary, working in conjunction with the city to benefit the city and city parks. We look for, uh, permission to host it. Permission to, uh, authorization to waive any fees associated with those particular, uh, permits. Had some nominal city support from the standpoint of, uh, advertising through, uh, our communication channels and a little, uh, little support on probably Friday and then again on Monday from Public Works as far as making sure the grounds are, uh, prepared and, and, uh, heavy pick the tables. I don't know what else, uh, I can say, I think every, they weren't attached to the package, but I do believe all the applications submitted to the city are, are complete and accurate. And, uh, I do not believe we're missing anything. So looking for council approval to proceed so that we can begin, uh, the next stage of, of building, promoting, advertising, fundraising, et cetera, et cetera, for the fourth of June, Saturday, the fourth of June.
So with that, we are looking for a motion to approve the following, so the Orno Rotary Party in the Park event on Saturday, June 4th. Especially event permit, the temporary signed current permit pursuant to approximate permits and permissions from other property owners or government agencies, temporary liquor license for services intoxicating liquor in connection with the Party in the Park event at Veterans Memorial Park, the waiver of all permit fees relating to the Party in the Park event, and staff support as listed in the written request. So moved.
So second.
Moved by Cahill, second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions for elderly members or staff?
Just thank you too for all the work you put into it. It is a great event for our city, so.
We're hoping Mother Nature is good to us again. All right, uh, with that, uh, this, this, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next item of business this evening is facility use application for Maple Plain Community Church.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Maple Plain Community Church has applied. I will recall, we implemented a new facility reservation, um, policy, um, an agreement last year. And this, um, was just kind of on the, in the gray area, I guess, of that policy. In that it has, they're expecting to host, um, over 200, uh, over 200 people. Um, so I just wanted to, to sort of finalize this at the council level. It's my understanding they've done it a number of years in the past, ran it through Gary regarding, um, uh, traffic issues. Um, so he will post it, no parking. Um, I did have a couple of questions, you know, I've got this new policy, um, and, and things have been kind of loose in the past. Um, but with that number of people, um, is council expecting, I mean, should, should we be requiring additional restrooms? They do have the church across the street. The, uh, damage deposit, um, and the maintenance and cleaning deposit are in place. But, um, they would, I believe, technically, well, the use of the park, there's, we don't really have a cost for the, the use of the entire park. We have a fee of $50 for the banned shelters. So technically, they will be using banned shelter, I don't believe, but they will be essentially using the entire park. So the question is, do we, do we want to implement, uh, a fee of some kind? Um, and then it's my understanding that maybe in the past, there's been some advertising for this event, um, through the city. And so is that something that council is supportive of?
So why don't you break those down one by one? Because you threw a lot of different things out there. Restrooms.
Do they need more?
No, the event's literally 15 minutes.
Oh, is it really that short?
An hour.
I mean, you spend more time waiting to say, they pray and then they release them. I mean, we don't, they don't even hide the eggs, they're just, it's short and sweet.
Just, you just leave it away. But the six-year-olds could be watching this.
I didn't say the Easter Bunny wasn't real, the Easter Bunny comes, but.
It's not like an eight to noon.
Oh heavens, no. No, like there, they're early setting up, like the event itself. I mean, people come early to park and to scope out, but, I mean, you see it every, I've been there every year. Am I exact?
No.
No, there's, some years the restaurants haven't even been open because it's still closed.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's the church across.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Um, so then the next question would just be, would an additional usage be applied at all? Okay. And are we okay with advertising the event?
No.
We just talked about that.
It's a, it's a benefit of the chamber. And so to waive it for an argument, uh, there are other churches who are members of the chamber we advertise for. And so I believe that we need to have that clear line, it's a benefit to the church.
And I'll go one step further and start advertising on the electronic sign for Maple Plain Community Church or any church in this community. Be prepared to, um, try to turn down the, an atheist's organization or something along that line because you don't like their position.
We believe in that, we would have to accept any further.
Understand that, so the policy was city business. And, and, I mean, no disrespect to the church, but, uh, just, it's, it was, we, we hashed through this some time ago. A lot of discussion on it, I think, I hope we're all still on the same page. Maybe we're not, but, uh, we get to put it to a vote, I guess, I know.
Any further discussion regarding that? Okay, so I am looking for a motion then to approve the facility reservation and use agreement with the Maple Plain Community Church for the use of Veterans Memorial Park for the Easter egg hunt.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca?
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Motion carries five to zero.
And let's clarify, we're not going to need a police presence there early? No, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I mean, I might throw the sign, so.
Well, you show up, but.
Yeah.
You're, you're. Just a three-hour minimum, $95 an hour.
It's community policing, that's what it's called. Uh, next item of business is letter X, the facility use license agreements.
So again, this is just kind of this, you know, the facility use policy. We had to kind of figure out how to transition these existing users, regular users of the parks. And so this is kind of the final step in the license agreement process. Um, we talked about this at the workshop and how, and what, what to charge various organizations. And a few remaining questions. Um, we, I believe, had talked about, um, high school baseball using Tempe Field for games. They are also requesting usage for practice. I wasn't sure how strict you wanted to be on that, and then also potentially JV games. Direction on that.
Was.
So. Are you asking if we charge the same fee for practice as a game? Is that a question or?
Asking if it's okay if they use it for practice. Like, could have sworn that direction was more of like, just for games.
I want to see the field used, and so I hope they know where to practice on it.
With the fee or not?
I think we had it immediately.
We have a fee, uh, I suppose, I believe, this summer.
If that covers the maintenance, I'm fine with the fee.
But there are some in here that are without fee. And, and I guess, was anyone? I know we identified the organizations at a workshop and discussed this. But until this got put into a spreadsheet where we started seeing how many days a week, from what period to what period, was anyone more surprised at the volume of, that these fields are getting, are getting used? And if, I think if we had that information in front of us weeks ago, that maybe I would have been so eager to jump to not charging particular organizations. I'm not trying to say that this is supposed to be a profit center. But this, you know, a lot of, that's a, this is a, this is a lot of use, I had no idea. I guess I don't get to this side.
So, uh, that, to that point, my, my question is, is so who? Who's actually maintaining, who's dragging the fields, who's, who's lining the fields when there's a game? You know, I know, I mean, we're mowing them, right? I mean, we're doing that. Um, but who does the actual maintenance of the ball fields?
Uh, Dylan has been doing rainbow and Veterans Memorial softball. And John has been doing Tempe Field.
The city does.
Yes, and trash removed.
Yeah.
But, but as far as the ballpark itself, when a group uses it, they're the ones going out there and putting the lines out and doing all that stuff, right? I mean, we don't have Dylan out there running around with the chalk liner, do we?
But Tempe grading the field and maintaining the field and the irrigation and all of that is all city.
We're, um, we're also, uh, depending on what time of the year and what day of the week we're applying, um, weed control on to the infills. We are dragging, uh, the infills with a, someone else with the name of it, but it, it gets put behind a, an UTV and, and their drag in preparation of, I, I know Rainbow as well as, uh, so I just, I looked at some of these going, I, I guess we agreed to not charge any fee, but I really had no idea that it was.
Well, we are charging in high school. Yeah, because. Yeah, because they're making money. I mean, and $700, two athletes more than cover that $700 just in their registration fee. And it costs us a lot of money and a lot of staff time to maintain and take care of those. So I agree, I want to see them used, but it shouldn't be at the resident's expense.
Right.
Where was the 750, was that calculated based on the number of days that they were requesting?
No, that was just in that work, that workshop that we talked about.
And I think that goes back to John's point, though. I'm not sure we were realizing that.
Yeah.
It was 35 days for the $700 or whatever it is.
And now we're adding three more days a week. In addition to last year, there was not a lot of respect for our park. And that was very frustrating. We had to put up flags, we had to put up cones, they were driving on the grass, not just the grass, the new sod and seed, even after multiple discussions. And I think that's what people forget, this comes at an expense to us. Yes, we want things used, but when it's by our residents, I have no problem charging the fee, especially when they're charging the fee to do it. And we're all paying taxes to the school and have fields there, so.
Does this have to be determined, like, for us?
Um, I believe that, uh, OSAN, they, uh, not sure that they established their lineup. If there was something with, like, we wanted to get this done because of the signup process. And are they changing their fees, but I'm not 100% certain about that.
Yeah.
Tuesday and Thursday, mid-April to the end of June, Rainbow Park. Mid-April to mid-July, Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, occasional weekends. And then mid-May to late July, $500. I can't believe that that is going to cover. Went down from, park went down from 45% to 38%, something like that. The, I just, I find that $500 is a, is a nominal amount of money for the amount of hours and days that are going into these particular things, so. And I, I don't personally have a problem with the, the diamond devils. No, I don't have the, any concern with the, the rainbow ones that Community Ed is doing. I think we're, we're focusing on those two. Could we bring those back to a workshop for more dialogue about appropriateness of that fee based on the numbers?
Well, and I'm also, why are they only practicing three days a week or are they the other two? I mean, like, I have to get that question answered as well. High school?
Uh, do they have midweek games?
I don't know, but before the games start, you're practicing at least five days a week.
Really? Most sports, I play a few.
Maybe I'm old.
Having, having sons in Delano baseball, they practice typically before the game, an hour, then they play the game and then clean up the field and then at home. Now, Orno has a decent varsity baseball field at the campus. I mean, that's where we always play games. We, my kids played at Delano, we didn't get to play at the Maple Plain, Tempe Field, in a high school game. So I know that's probably nicer and they want to play there. It's much better.
And the practice isn't going to have as much impact on the park or on the field as, you know, as a game, because then we have traffic and, and garbage and, and everything else. So I'm not so concerned with the, the cost of the, of the practice, but I, I haven't really taken a look at it. It's a number of, I thought that, that, I thought that for the number of games scheduled, that the fee was, was reasonable. Uh, my only other thought was, is for, you know, playoff games, those are going to be more well attended. I, I would be, wouldn't be opposed to a hundred dollars per game on those, uh, in addition.
Let's find out how many games there are, how many potential playoffs, and let's call that back to our shop and we can discuss it.
So that, I know that high school only has like six home games.
Well, let's, yeah, but let's find out when they are too, and playoffs, because if we're going to give a blanket answer, we need all those dates. We don't end up in trouble like we did two years ago.
And do you want to know when JV games are or is JV not?
Well, if that's one of the questions, are we? Well, if that's one of the questions, are we entertaining JV games as well?
I think for the same fee, I mean, we can cover the expenses of the use.
Yeah, maybe we should come up with a a dollar value per game, dollar value per practice, what our cost is associated with that.
Are we, are we talking about just sort of incremental costs like Dylan to drive the fields and stuff? Not like overall.
Probably most of that costs, yeah.
Yeah.
Well. Water, I mean. So we'll bring that to a workshop whenever it's ready.
So it goes on about high school. Question, and it'll be, or is there anything that we want to do tonight? Or we're just going to bring a whole ten back?
Well.
Do you need something done tonight?
Take something off our plate. Couldn't we approve the Orno Community Ed, like Mike said, and the Diamond Devils, for example? Get those off the plate.
And I don't know if it matters, but in the Community Ed one, it notes June first. Do the dates? Do they need to coincide with the actual, you know, and when things will be happening?
Is it before June first?
Nope, it's after.
I guess it would make it slightly easier if we knew that, like, the Community Ed Diamond Devils and Legion, if we weren't going to charge them anything like we had talked about, just get those out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the facility reservation and use agreement with the Legion, the Diamond Devils, and Community Education.
So moved.
Moved by Delon.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, motion carries five to zero. Next item is another resolution for us, and this one is to look at the reestablishing precincts and pulling places. And this is a requirement from state statute to be reestablished after the state legislature has redistributed. Any questions for staff?
You should totally go with two precincts.
Cause there's not enough to do.
North side, south side, we get some.
We don't want people throwing us, well, it's not safe.
Yeah, I will move to approve a resolution, reestablishing precincts and pulling places.
I will second that.
Motion by Cahill, second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? And hearing none, it is a resolution again.
Uh, DeLuca?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Maskevsky?
Aye.
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 Delon?
Aye.
The eyes have it five to zero.
Nice work, everyone.
Uh, the next item of business is the housing and development resolution. I actually submitted this. It was presented at the Regional Council of Mayors and the League of Minnesota Cities, which we are part of, is asking for city support in this. There was a link to read the article, and for more information, I am by no means an expert on it. But I wanted to bring it forward to our council.
Well, I support the premise, uh, and I know what they're trying to do regarding legislation that's going on. I personally can't vote for this because it's too ambiguous, asking us to vote for any legislation that restricts cities. And so it's a little too vague for me, so I just, I won't support it. But I love the the meaning behind it. We should be supporting a full range of housing, um, with local control. We know our community, so I do like the premise behind it, but the actual resolutions will be.
Thank you for that perception.
And and I think that the legislation, proposed legislation that was bouncing around committees since last summer is far too cumbersome for a city. And I'm in full support of leaving. If it derails that type of legislation, then I'm in full support of supporting a resolution that 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 ensures that ordinance and zoning power remains with the local municipality. I am in support of it. And I will make the resolution.
You can make the motion.
I can make the motion.
All right, so there's a motion by council member Faye to approve a resolution supporting housing and local decision-making authority.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're back in Clarissa's question.
Faye?
Aye.
Maskevsky?
Aye.
Delon?
Aye.
Kessi?
DeLuca?
No.
The eyes have it three to one to one. Because they're stretching my brain, it's been a long day. All right. Next item of business is utility rates and other fees. And I'm going to turn this one over to staff again.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a long time coming with a utility rate study being started before I was hired even. It was, uh, uh, Abdo that kind of got got lined up to do the study. They didn't start it probably till late spring, early summer. Took a couple months to get it done. Initially presented it. Then late summer, early fall, we had a couple of different discussions with Bonnie, our accountant, on it. We hosted the utility rate listening session at, um, in January. We did an article for the city newsletter. Haven't received really much feedback on it. That I'll probably do another article, just kind of reminding people. In the spring, they'll probably notice it a lot more when they get that first bill, obviously. So we would be looking at adopting the ordinance, which would put the, um, rate, the utility rates in effect back to January first usage for that April billing. Now, we do sell water to Medina, and they bill on a monthly basis. So that would make it an effect for their April billing as well, but maybe for their, starting with their March usage. There are a few other, um, minor changes to, um, uh, fee schedule as part of this. So we were pulling a number of fees out of the city code language itself as part of the Mini Code Project. So we kind of putting these into the into the fee schedule. So I did just a little rearranging of tobacco. We haven't changed anything there, so we've moved, uh, the pond broker license, the bed breakfast license, um, from the code into the fee schedule. We had established the facility reservation use fees in the policy last year. So that brings those into this, the fee schedule. We added a sign package fee and escrow. We have a sign application, but then there's also a sign package, um, application. And so in theory, the sign package is the same as the site plan. But if you're not, if you don't know that, you don't know that, you don't necessarily think to charge the appropriate fee and escrow, and it's a very tech-consuming process. So I just want to make it very clear that we should be charging those. We would suggest removing the temporary fence permit. There is actually no such permit noted in city code. We don't issue that. Increasing the deposit for the temporary hydrant here, we created a process and form for that. And I would recommend doing a larger deposit, just make it clear, A, that the costs are not unsubstantial. And then also so that we're not out completely. We did finally get the park construction bill paid, so that was very exciting. And then, uh, hunting permit, again, just pulls it out of city code, um, into the fee schedule. And those are issued by last time. Happy to answer any questions?
Very nice work. Three clarifications before this gets approved. Have you heard anything from the state where, you know, we pay a quarterly, water fee to the state for analysis? If the two forty-five was derived by dividing the annual fee by residents served? And have you heard anything that the state will be raising their quarterly? Just confirm that the state does not intend, because we haven't seen one yet. We'll see there, we'll see our first one in March or April. Make sure that they're not raising their fee like they did a couple of years ago, because we were paying a dollar thirty-nine, and we didn't notice that they had raised their price. So that's why we're up to two dollars and forty-five cents, but we missed several quarters of collecting that extra fee. So just confirm that. And then I know we talked about, so we've got this utility rate increase coming through. And I know we talked about those neighboring communities that would be purchasing water from us. Is it my understanding that at this time, at the at the adoption of this ordinance change, that we will not be imposing any additional fees to the city of Medina, for example?
You say that, that whole conversation is, they're rushing into my brain.
I didn't see it.
Right, let's not call that one a separate item. Yep. We wanted to add that. Does anybody remember what percentage we talked about?
I don't.
For which fee? A surcharge on how the out-of-city, uh, water charges.
I believe that's what it was. Discussion.
Yes, we did. I mean, do you do you remember when we had the decision? I go look back at my notes, was it a workshop?
Yeah.
But it wasn't the last workshop. Man, I'll look, you know, but I not, I won't be able to find it now.
So I should just remember, um, just because we've got to get this implemented, um, change all of our systems and modify them. I want to say it was somewhere in that like twenty-five to thirty percentage. It was substantial, but we're just.
Mike, what do you recall? You already played a role on this. Thirty?
Forty percent?
Twenty percent? Forty?
Forty percent.
Uh, thirty sticking in my mind. Let me, let me look through my notes, too.
And then while we're looking at that, I know we questioned, it was called fire hydrant connection at our last workshop. And we commented that the dollar per gallon was was too low. But now it's considerably high. Was that, was that, was that a typo or something or?
It was a typo on my part.
Okay.
But I was going to bring that up. In the last, so, um, in the, it's in the fee schedule already. So what's in here is, was already adopted in the fee schedule? The other number came out of.
Now, is is this millions of gallons that they purchased from us, or hundreds of thousands of gallons that they purchased from us? They took from the fire hydrant below the water tower. Was that treated water? Do we have access in the city to non-treated water? Just well water? And I don't feel so bad because now I know why our chemical budget.
I was just going to say, that explains our chemical budget.
That and the increased cost, you might have just answered that question. Which is again, when people think we charge a lot for our water, they don't understand all that goes into it. We're not thinking of money.
Well, there's, there's not a, there's not a sprinkler that runs more often in this city than the one that's watering Tempe Field every summer. So, um, that's treated water as well, I'm assuming.
Workshop notes from twelve, thirteen, we talked about thirty-five percent.
Oh, there we go.
Thirty-five percent?
Non-resident rates, one hundred and thirty-five percent.
So how, since that's not in writing?
That's a fair motion, or we can, we can just put it verbally, you know, say something to the effect of with the addition of out-of-city, outside-the-city surcharge on water rates of thirty-five percent, something to that question.
All right, so with that, then, I'm looking for a motion to approve ordinance three fourteen, amending the city fee schedule for utility and other miscellaneous fees, including the addition of outside-the-city surcharge of thirty-five percent.
And may I reiterate, are we, um, adding that to all fees? Including testing the, uh, water treatment plant? Was it just fixed and volume?
Well, they're not in the mus, they're not, they're not in the, they're not. They, they, we supply them water. We do not supply them treatment, uh, sewer treatment, correct?
Yep, yep, you're right.
And we're not supplying them storm sewer.
No.
Or so.
So it's just, it's just water. Fixed and volume, and are we also applying that then to the water treatment?
For outside residents?
Give me the twenty-five dollars per quarter. That, my personal opinion.
With the increase to thirty-five percent.
I think, I think it's the, it's the, it's the water. And the cost to produce the water, wear and tear on the facility.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Cahill?
I'll second.
Second by Faye. Any further questions or discussion or clarifications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same side, uh, because of the ordinance.
Oh, my gosh. Uh, DeLuca? Cahill?
Aye.
Maskevsky?
Aye.
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 Delon?
Aye.
All right, Delon, I, I don't mean to make you like the last man.
That's right.
All right. Next item of business this evening is council reports and other business. And we will start with council member Delon.
Oh, sure, now put me on the spot. Just our regular meetings. I did attend my first, um, Fire Relief, uh, Commission meeting. It was very educational. I learned a lot for my first meeting because there was quite a few topics on the, uh, on the agenda. So I did, I did get to learn quite a bit. I was actually quite impressed with the, um, with the conversation, um, that we had. So I'm looking forward to future meetings.
Thank you for that update. Council member DeLuca?
Several workshops, including, uh, gatherings where we did Clarissa's performance review for the year. Also had an opportunity to spend some time with the regional drug force, task force. Also had an opportunity to spend some time with the Regional Drug Force Task Force. And I think sometimes we don't understand as a council, just how much good work is out there by our drug task force people. I mean, they're, obviously, they're not out in the front, they're not out there doing, but they are taking drugs off the streets. And the sheer quantity of drugs that have, that they were talking about was almost staggering compared to what you think. We live out in a part of the world that, that you think is immune from that. It's not. And our, thank you to our police forces, our chiefs, our officers, our drug task force people for the fantastic work that they're doing.
My councilmember Faye?
No, no, I thought you were going to.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's alright, but you were just following orders. Uh, well, I continue with, to attend, uh, uh, with the mayor, Orno Rotary, on behalf of the city. I, uh, attended a party in the park planning, uh, meeting, uh, for which the agenda, uh, item on tonight's packet, uh, was included. It was produced by a small core of, of initial planners, and I just wanted to reach out to all of you and thank you for the approval and the, and the waiver fees. It, uh, definitely a, uh, wonderful civic event. I, too, over nice, warm, dry weather. Uh, with, uh, Councilmember Dylan, I did also attend Fire Commission, or Fire Relief, I'm sorry. Um, um, where we discussed and forwarded a, um, pension pay, uh, increase that will go in front of the membership of, of the Fire Department on the seventh, and will ultimately, uh, make its way back to council. Um, and in a non-city role, I attended, uh, an open house for, uh, Serenity Village. It was quite enlightening. I, uh, I can honestly say more people attend, more residents attended that meeting than the last five years of truth and taxation and local, vocal board review. So, uh, I'm curious to see how it works through, uh, the channels of, of land use, uh, um, and, uh, public, additional public comment, and a couple of workshops, including Clarissa's review and tonight's meeting. Nice that I put it together finally.
Good job. Right, Councilmember Faye.
I have the pleasure of attending not one but two water shit meetings, including their technical advisory group. Which I was there to listen, yes, John Chuckles, because we are lucky to have a wealth of staff who probably forgot more about water than I'll ever truly just people who know a lot about keeping sure our waterways are clean and making sure everything's going the way it should, so, keeping up with that.
Thank you. Um, it has been a busy month for everyone, and appreciate the work everyone is doing. Uh, I was able to attend the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce. It's always good, um, to network and, um, find ways that we can support one another. Clarissa and I were able to attend the future fire service meeting, along with some fire personnel. The big thing, um, we are starting to make traction in there and talk is possibly sharing equipment, so maybe not a building right away, but equipment. So we've all, um, there's some smaller task force made with that, and we all have a little bit of homework, and we will need to, again, we need every other month. Was able to attend the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, uh, the Regional Council of Mayors, Minnesota Women in City Government. Uh, was able to represent our city on the Senior Center Advisory Board, and also in the Orno Healthy Youth, uh, Family Service Collaborative. And was, attended my first ever snowball open all my life that I lived here. I've never gone. As a Rotary, we hosted a booth on the lake and you play golf with tennis balls and golf clubs and bats, and it was rather entertaining day. Um, just fun to mingle and get to know people. And then I was able to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Elected Officials Conference, and it's just, those trainings are just invaluable, the different things that are learned and that we can take away from those, so I appreciate the opportunity, um, to go and to learn and look forward to bringing some things back to help us continue to be better and improve. Anything from staff?
Um, if we could, we discussed a follow-up kind of at the end of each meeting for communications for the week, so I would propose, I would say we need to, uh, kind of communicate utility rates and other fees, party in the park. Is there anything else we would like to kind of highlight from this meeting? Or other issues with that, uh, cookies with council next week?
Yes, cookies with council on March night from four to six here, so bring your questions or come and visit, and we'll be, um, Clarissa and myself at this one.
We talked proactive versus reactive. Party in the park is very proactive. I think utility rate is going to be very react.
And the surveys will update today, right? So that definitely has some, I'll try to get some data for next session. Alright, and, um, maybe just keep an eye on, uh, what stage, and like if they share anything about Citizens Academy. Just to get people thinking about it for next time, if that's happening. Anything else? Alright, with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
By DeLuca?
I'll second.
Invite along, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. He has adjourned at eight thirty-six.
Thank you, chief, thank you, Barb.
Thank you, I did. Notice how I waited?